Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exit which is to your left of this room. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs, and please do not use the elevator. Meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record in minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda, extra copies of which are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant or the representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give his/her address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. This case is a public hearing; it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to public input, and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at this point. Anyone that is here regarding the Densmore Road application, that application has been postponed until the September meeting due to the fact that we don't feel that there's a complete application at this point. So if you're here to speak with regards to that, keep yourself looking at the agendas, and we should see that in September. Also, we have the case of the appeal to the determination about the woodlot that is not being heard tonight. That is also postponed, but we are hearing the matter regarding a sketch plan conference regarding the properties. So depending on what you're here for, you can stay if you want to watch the riveting action that is other people's applications. If not, you may leave or stay as you see fit. At which time now, Michelle, if you would introduce our first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number PB 1508-1, upon the matter of request by Land Tech acting as agent for John Gier for steep slope, water course, and flood plain environmental protection overlay district permits to install a landscape berm with related grading on premises 1172 Lakeshore Boulevard in an R1 residential district.
I'm John Schiraba with Land Tech representing Mr. Gier this evening. John is here and can answer any questions that I cannot. The application that you have before you is a reaction to a stop-work order. Mr. Gier was trying to beautify his property and screen it from the lights and sound of Lakeshore Drive, and doing so, he constructed a berm as you went out to the site you saw. So it's about a four-foot-high earthen berm. Upon several visits from the building department, I guess, a stop-work order was issued due to the fact that he was in an E-Pod area. The site that's in the E-Pod area is the portion of the property north of Lakeshore Boulevard, east of his driveway. There's a large gully down there, and that's the E-Pod area, steep slope E-Pod. But fortunately for Mr. Gier, all the work that he really wanted to do is complete. He's not proposing to bring any more fill material in. He was to a point where he really wanted to finish grade, seed, and plant his plantings on the berm. So that's really why we're here tonight. The plan that you have shows the proposed berm kind of cleaned up a little better than it is. We show plantings, both arborvitae and some grasses along the berm. If you've been out to the site, you can see that the work has been stopped for almost two months. It's got grass already going on the slope, so it's slightly stabilized, not stabilized to the level that we want to see it. There's also a silt fence down at the bottom that he installed as a homeowner would down there during this construction project. So we're really trying to bring Mr. Gier into compliance with this plan. We did submit the plan to the town. We have comments from the town engineer. I could go through those comments individually, but they're generally, we agree with them. Don't have any issues with some of those comments. We also have comments from Monroe County DRC. So if you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I can go through those comments individually, or I'll start with...
Do you have a conservation board as well?
Oh, I think I do have a conservation board, yes.
Do we have comments, copies of the conservation board's comments?
Yes.
Yep. Oh, here, just, I got it. Very good. Got to turn the page.
You want me to start with the conservation board? I was going to start with the town engineer.
Start with the town engineer.
Town engineer comments, his letter dated August 24th. There are three comments. Comment number one is our note number 11, "Provide a site-specific schedule." Well, that schedule's kind of up to you, gentlemen. Depending on the approval of this project, he wants to start immediately and grade and seed that site as soon as possible and do his planting. So schedule will start as soon as he can pick up an application or permit to do the work, and he figures two to three weeks of effort to do that. So I would say middle of September, October 1st would be the completion date. We want to get this ahead of any freezing before, so that we get some grass to grow. Note number two is a seeding note, "Provide a stormwater prevention plan." That was an error on our part. That was one of our generic notes that corresponded to a stormwater prevention plan, and we're not doing that on this project. Number three, that the project will surcharge, fill the slope exceeding the angle of repose and stability of the slope detriment upon vegetation and cover of the existing, or being retained. Show the locations of significant trees and limits of existing woodlands on the plans. So the topographic survey was completed. We showed the limits of the contours. The site is heavily vegetated. There are two large oak trees that are really, they're on my plan, but they were scaled down. So if you've been to the site, probably have 30-inch diameter oak trees on each side of the driveway. Obviously, those are to remain. But we're not proposing to fill the site anymore. It's just clean up the area that's there. You'll see if you've been there, there's a little retaining wall that was there that's kind of failing, and we just want to stabilize, vegetate, and stop the filling in the area. So that's really what we want to do, and I think, and I can add some information to the town engineer on his plans. I don't see that being an issue.
It seemed like when I went out there, one of the large oak trees, the soil of the berm was right up against the trunk.
On the west side?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, not arborist, but I believe that that'll kill the tree or harm the tree.
Yep. Well, I don't think we have a problem pulling some of that material back.
Should be away from the...
Should be pulled away. The base of the tree is essential that there's no covering over it.
So it'll taper it down two, three, two or three feet before the tree base?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that.
John, did you say arborvitae?
I got to check what I specked on my plan. I think, oh, juniper. They were junipers, I'm sorry.
All right, now maybe if you would address the conservation board's comments?
Conservation board comments, they're mostly regarding providing more grading along the, to avoid the stream contamination. We believe that the site plan can be greatly improved by creating much more diverse landscaping plan, and then they gave a series of different landscape products to install. So we have a very minimal plan with screening. We could augment some of those plantings with these as represented. But again, we were trying to make it fit in with his front yard. If you look at the berm that was on his west property line, we want to be consistent with that one. But if we want to put some additional grasses on the slope, we don't have a problem with that. Right now, it's just seeded with regular annual grass.
What about the comments from the county?
County comments are typical county comments. We have, number one, monumentation must be checked. There are no monuments adjacent to this area, check that. So there are no survey monuments. That takes care of number one and two. They want us to add a note to County Road that Lakeshore Boulevard's County Road 97. We will do that. And then the portion of this berm is within the public right-of-way. The Monroe County has a condition that a permit will be required to get a permit for those to grade within that. So we will apply to the Monroe County DOT for a grading permit, and we'll accept responsibility for the berm and the maintenance of the berm in the right-of-way. And that's really what their comments are. So in conjunction with the E-Pod permit, we will submit our plan to the Monroe County DOT for grading within the public right-of-way.
How about questions from the board? Jay?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just a brief one. Are you going to need to, around the oak tree, you're going to need to put brick or whatever so that you don't get any wash into that area, or?
Yeah, that comment was new to me. Obviously, Mr. Plermo brought that up, and so I think maybe some landscape bricks specked around there to build a little retaining wall could be added, and I can reflect that on...
Yeah, it's good to pull it all back, but to get it to stay, you probably need some help. So that's the only, that's the only comment I have.
I appreciated the input from the conservation board, and I thought they had some really good ideas about some different types of plantings. That being said, I recognize it's somewhat up to the owner's personal preference, but I really also took interest in their suggestion regarding the type of grass, particularly because of the erosion issues, and I think you should seriously consider those types of grasses, especially in the area adjacent to where the silt fencing's going to be.
Yeah, we don't have a problem adding some of those grasses to that north side of that slope in that area. I think on the berm, we want to keep a more residential look, but down south, we will speck some of those grasses.
Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, my curiosity is, under LaBelle's comments, number three, the project will surcharge the slope exceeding the angle of repose. Stability of the slope is dependent upon vegetative cover being retained. They're asking for that to be shown, and I'm curious if, because I think this is more of a Michael issue perhaps, or conservation board, will that vegetative cover work long term?
Right. Well, so what happened out there is obviously there was some fill placed on that slope during the construction of the berm. So there was raw dirt, for lack of a better term, placed over basically Goldenrod and other weed areas along that steep slope. The fill was placed, stop-work order. There's grass down there now. I think that we're not making the situation any worse as far as surcharge of water or water volumes or anything like that. I agree that the slope should be stabilized better, and I think we can do better than was there before. So I think incorporating some of the conservation board's comments with the grasses on that slope, along with if we have to put any geotext, things like that during construction. I could work with Mr. Gier if there's anything, you know, again, we're back to that sensitive point of seeding and stabilizing. If there's a Geo mat that has to be installed, I'll, I can be on-site and work with them if there's anything like that. And that's really what we want to do. We want to protect the north slope in the right-of-way of Lakeshore Boulevard. And I think this will help, but also the berm might even help the situation keeping water from migrating off the road down that in an uncontrolled fashion. So I think we're going to do a better job than was there historically, and we'll keep an eye on it, and I do take the conservation board's comments seriously about additional grasses to vegetate that slope.
I guess, John, what I'm looking for, and I don't know if you can do this, I think you can, is I'd like to see that delineated now.
Okay.
And I'd actually like, and I know we do have someone to hear from the conservation board, I'm not sure if they're willing to give an opinion tonight or comfortable doing so, but I'd love to hear it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the delineated, the limits of what? You know, I can show you, the thing that delineates are the fill that was there are shown. We have, I think, a note of 560 square feet of area that was disturbed on that slope. As far as delineating that, any further? I would, yeah, I could try. I don't really know what we're looking to do with identifying that more, other than maybe that area that we have is hatched, that 560-square-foot area we noticed to incorporate some of those grasses that the conservation board has expressed interest in putting it in there. I don't know if that's all, I don't know if I'm answering your question.
To a degree.
I'm trying.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Bernie?
No questions.
Mary?
I'm all set.
Michael?
John, the suggestions made by the conservation board for some of the species of grasses and plants, I know that there's some stuff in there that's quite foreign to many people who do planning, but a lot of it is wonderfully water-absorbent. It sucks the water right out of the place when you're talking about water runoff. And I'm never sure what plant deer are going to eat this year, but it's nice to have a variety in there. If you put arborvitae in there, that's a dessert, they're going to scuff that up in a minute.
Yep.
But they have a variety of these things here, and, you know, you might touch base with them to say, you know, which are not deer-resistant, but a little better than others. The sheer variety gives you a greater chance of having a garden that's going to maintain itself.
Okay.
Or an area.
Yeah, I really don't think that Mr. Gier's a problem, adopting two or three of those different grasses down on that slope. You know, it's his property, he wants to protect it, so.
And look good.
Yep.
Thanks.
I guess my comments are, when I went by, I don't know, I understand why you're doing it, but the berm seems awfully severe, and the angle of repose seems very vertical, and I'm not 100% certain at how you're going to maintain some of that. I mean, even to the point where you're girdling some of the trees by, you know, building up to the base of the trees, I just think, it seems ill-planned. I don't know why you're building in the right-of-way when it could have easily been put within your own property and achieved the same. I'm not really happy with the plantings. I think they're very, I don't know, pedestrian. And I don't know, I'm just not 100% convinced that this plan is really well-thought. I think you're giving us the plan because it's kind of what's there. I don't know if you had a chance of engineering it from advance if this is exactly what you would do. I don't know, I just think it's way too severe. I think that the grading should be looked at, the angle of repose on the berm should be looked at, the proximity to the trees should be looked at, plantings. Why is it, you know, justify why it needs to be in the right-of-way and not on the private property, and all of those things are my concerns, and...
Yep. Well, if I could just go a few of those concerns, why it's in the right-of-way, let's go, take it one step back. Why does it look like it does? Because homeowner was building it, and that's what it looks like today. It's not finished. If you look at my plan, the berm is a lot smoother, although we have not taken account for the trees, which we can in our upcoming edits, but it will be a more smoother, natural, let's say, normal-looking berm. What he's built there today is topsoil or dirt, filled dirt brought and dumped with his truck and not really handled in a final grading fashion. So that's why it looks like that, you know, and so I'm trying to work with what's there and not do a lot of grading to cause more problems.
What were the soils that were used? What are the nature of the soils that were used for that?
It looks like subsoils from excavation, if they're relatively fairly clean. I don't see a lot of rock or...
Clay?
Yeah, they're heavier soils, not a lot of silt. It's not topsoil, I can tell you that.
Because, I mean, I inherited a berm in my yard where this person used heavy clay. I mean, you could barely dig a hole in it.
Yep.
And the tree, the plantings do not grow well in that material whatsoever, and they just die off.
Yeah.
I mean, literally, it's like trying to dig with a pickaxe to try to get through the clays.
Yeah. You know, I understand your points. You know, we design berms every day in our office, so, you know, there's maintenance issues, but this is with the homeowner, what his plans were, and it is a reaction to his efforts, and it's not, so to say, the engineered plan. It's trying to get him a permit for what he started, and this is the process we go through. To your point about the angle of repose, well, if you think about the right-of-way, the further we push it north, the more we affect that slope. So that's why pushing it north would be, would create more fill on that slope.
That's why maybe it's a bad idea.
I guess that's, I understand your opinion, so.
Are you saying, Peter, to soften the berm? Is that a term I might use?
Yes.
Not as, not as erect?
Right. It's almost like a dirt wall now.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of pluses for taking some of that dimension out, and some of it is certainly less runoff of dirt, less runoff of plants. I mean, the planting of those will be critical because they'll be so subject to, especially the plants are on the south side of that, they're just going to get sun all day, beaten on some hot, well, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, we're willing to, I mean, we submitted our application. You know, there's an application process, takes several months to get in front of you, so this is the first time we've had a really chance to talk outside the workshop of this application. So, you know, if you're saying soften the berm a little bit, I think we can work with you on that. I'd like to, I'd like to try not to push it too far north, because then we are impacting the soils, especially on the east side of the driveway. But I think it will, again, you know, it's one of those things that you look at, and you're like, oh, this is ugly. Well, you didn't have a chance to finish. So I think if you look at his home and the quality of his home, this will be consistent with all his efforts there. I know he spent a lot of time and money on his home, and I think this will augment that and not take away from his house.
Is there a chance the county's not going to issue a permit for building within the right-of-way?
I don't think so, something of this minor. I haven't talked into Tom Cesaro directly about it. Just got the comments, so I really don't, there's no sidewalk in that area, there's no utilities, there's a guardrail over there.
You're very close to the sidewalk, excuse me.
Yeah, there's no utilities further north of that. There's a guardrail. I don't see the county having any issue. You know, there's no other utilities. You're right, there is a sidewalk. I misspoke. But that's why I think in their note, they asked us that he has to be responsible, he has to get a permit to do that activity, and they'll make him responsible for maintenance of that berm with this permit.
I guess at this point, I'd like to open it up to public input. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to this application may do so at this point. So many people. Going to close it to public input at this point. I don't know how everyone else feels. My opinion is that needs to be a little bit more thought. Reengineering.
I'm not favorable.
You're not?
No.
Still approving it, you mean?
For the basic reason that I mentioned before. I'd like to have some more information as it relates to the...
Excuse me, Ray, could you use your microphone, honey? Please, thank you.
I'm sorry, Michelle. To repeat, I'm not favorable as proposed, based on the questions that I asked. I don't feel like I have a specific answer. I do believe that this berm is too close to the sidewalk. I just think it needs some massaging, and I, that's the way I feel.
I think I'd like to see the massaging, too, come before the board. I don't know, does anyone else have any? I mean, it seems to me like, when I looked at it, it's not engineered, and it needs some engineering.
Well, I think, I think Mr. Schiraba said the same thing, and in all fairness to the town and to the applicant, could we not suggest a postponement or a...
Yeah, we would table it. Or they would ask them to table it.
And let them address our concerns, then come back.
So my only question is, I think they said they need to get some plantings in relatively soon. I don't know the timeframe. My question is, instead of a postponement, could it be something that could be handled via review by the department and the chairman? Make it quick. I don't know what would work for the applicant.
Look, could we allow them or ask them to, in the area of the E-Pod, suggest that they get some grasses down now while we're in the height of our grass-growing season, and then address the berm issues after? I don't know if that's a possibility.
Well, there's a siltation fence up right now, right?
It's at the bottom. It's not in that great a shape. Really haven't had a chance to go down there with a stop-work order. But I understand the flavor of your comments, Mr. Chairman and Mr. McConnell, you know, as far as an engineered plan, it's a berm, you know? We do a lot of difficult things.
It's a berm in an E-Pod next to a street with...
Right.
Some mature trees that are...
Yep.
Let me, John, let me ask this question.
The devil's in the details always with these things.
Yep. I guess so, you know, and I just had a chance to speak with my client, so, you know, your comments of putting a retaining wall to separate the oak trees, we don't have a problem with that. Softening the berm to a lesser severe angle, we don't have a problem with that. The issue we have, that he has as a homeowner, is he, I think, the stop-work order went in June, and I know that's his fault. But, you know, a lot, you know, so he's here trying to remedy the situation, so he hasn't been doing anything there for two months. I would like the opportunity, if we can make some kind of motion where I can come back in two weeks to your workshop and give you the updated plan at that point, that would help us out, because we're waiting another whole month, in my mind, are simple edits. I know they're critical within the E-Pod, but this gives me time to identify, you know, conservation board comments dated the 22nd, you know, your comments that I received tonight. So I think we could do that within the two-week period if there's a way you can see fits that we can keep this project going. It's not, again, it's a small project, I would say, for this board to handle, but, and maybe I can address your questions more clearly and better. I'll also have time to talk to the town engineer.
You'll be there?
Make sure he's happy.
I mean, what do we give, what is the, where's my thingy?
What do you want? Plans and stuff? Here.
Steep, slow, water course, flood plain environment protection, where there's an E-Pod permit. So we're not giving them preliminary or final site plan approval, it's just to build within an E-Pod?
Correct.
I'd leave it to the discretion of the board, but based on some of the comments I'm hearing from the board, it may be best to allow the applicant to redesign a bit and to come before you at the next meeting. The other option would be to approve it conditioned upon some delineated modifications you'd like to see happen, and then have those modifications be presented to the town engineer and be subject to his satisfaction and sign off.
Well, we can also make it subject to either the staff or the chairman's approval, and we can review that in two weeks, like we said, which is what I would suggest we do, because then it gives the applicant time to put down the grasses and everything else in a timely fashion. We've done approvals subject to the chairman's okay in the past, and so we're not really setting a precedent or anything like that. So, and it's, most of the work is outside the E-Pod anyway, I believe, for this application. Really just a question of what happens inside the, inside the E-Pod. And if you, if you get some idea of what the soils are and what the angle of repose that the staff and the chairman have in mind, then those plans should be able to be drawn up in a couple of weeks.
Peter, if, if in the timeframe of now till workshop, the work that we just delineated can be put on paper for a final approval from, from, from the office with a yea-nay from this board, I'm aboard that. I'm okay with that. In other words, it's a, we say yes or no tonight, conditioned upon looking at those plans again within a two-week frame and having them in front of the town soon enough for that town, our town, to say yes.
What I see of the issues is we need the mitigation of the overly steep-sloping berm, modification of the plantings, and redesign of the encroachment. What do they call that part of the tree there? I forget the tree.
Base. Just call it the base.
Redesign of the encroachment on the tree base by the berm. I would also like some serious consideration as to why you're building within the right-of-way and justification for that. I would like some sort of outreach to the county. And I do think that that berm is very close to the sidewalk.
And I do think that that berm is very close to the sidewalk.
Should we handle Seeker, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. We've started to put together the Seeker review on this project. As far as part two goes for the 11 items listed there, we, we find that there being no or small impact may occur. I'm just reading this over again to see if there's... One of the items though is will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resourcing wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, floor? There's kind of, will the proposed action result in increase for the potential for erosion, flooding, drainage problems? Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the, no, well, the proposed... I don't, does everyone, everyone's got a copy in front of them? Do you see anything that you think would be, should be modified?
I don't.
All right. Part three, determination, this is unlisted action. The project, which includes modifications based on input from the town engineer and town staff, will minimize potential adverse impacts to environmental features located in the, within the E-Pod boundaries. Are we willing to make a motion regarding to Seeker at this point?
Yeah, I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, in the matter of PB 1508-1, with respect to Seeker, I move this is unlisted action, negative declaration.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. The board. Lucas, you were the second, correct?
Correct.
So, I think at this point...
Can you read the conditions again, Mr. Chairman, for...
I have the conditions. Our mitigation of the overly steep slope of the berm, design mitigation, I guess it might be.
Are you talking about the berm on the east side?
I think in general the berm is overly steep, from what I recall. And I think it's more the east side, yes. It's a little hard to read with the contours there and I'm not sure that the contours are 100% reflective of what the existing conditions are. But I think it looks too steep, that it won't be stable, no matter how many plantings you put on it. The other next modi, next condition is modification of the plantings. The next modification, suggestion is redesign of the encroachment on the tree base by the berm. And the next one is comments to be received from the county on the ability to receive a permit for constructing within the right of way.
Mr. Chairman, a quick question, not to be, as it relates to the plantings, whose recommendations would we take as to modification?
Well, I think that there's something between the junipers and...
I'm just curious.
Yeah, the conservation board.
On our board, Mike knows more than...
Well, I, I, I think it's, in all fairness to the, to the applicant, the conservation board has given a potpourri of plantings to go there. And, and as I stated, that if you, if you mix and match them, you're going, you're going to have, first of all, a more attractive look to it. And then, secondly, you're going to stabilize growth therein because none of them would be susceptible to the same thing if something should come along and it's going to...
So, the modification then, Mike, would be based, and I'm just thinking for the record, on the conservation board's recommendations?
Yeah, and, and whatever the other plans are suggested by their landscaper or landscaping firm.
I'm just trying to be...
Yeah, yeah, I think it's good.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Schrauber had indicated that the applicant might be willing to implement slope stabilization matting. Might that be a condition the board would be interested in adding, that the applicant worked with the town engineer to implement that sort of matting and stabilization?
Well...
Technology.
I think that's an engineering solution that may or may not be required based on the design, the final design. And I don't know, I don't know that, that, John, you weren't saying that's something that's necessary at this point due to the conditions. You're saying that in general that...
Yeah, this, this, this project's an active construction site, so if he was to move ahead with this, flatten these berms out and stabilize a slope as it is, if we were to see some erosion going on, we could, we could put a GeoMAD in there and vegetate that. But it's more of a construction during time of construction.
Right.
So, I, you know, I could spec it. I don't see it right now, the need for it because it's all grass. If we went down there, the whole slope is, is, has been stabilized naturally. But if something was to occur during construction, I would, I would keep an eye on it with Mr. Gear and say, hey, well, let's, let's fix this problem. But, I mean, I, I don't have a problem just doing that, putting on a note that GeoMAD is, is required during construction or something like that.
Water course and floodplain, floodplain.
We're going to make a motion. What do we, what are we giving them? We're giving them...
Preliminary, isn't it?
Preliminary? It's not preliminary site plan. We can't really give them any other approvals at this point.
Just no, yeah, we're just, we're just saying yea or nay.
Yep, it's an E-Pod permit.
Well, if we say nay, then we're denying the E-Pod.
No, but can't we say yea with conditions?
Yea with conditions.
Yeah, that's what I thought we were doing.
All right, yea with conditions. That's what we're doing.
I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman. Yea with conditions, as it relates to, I'm sorry, Jay.
Before we go on, what, what do we, what do we propose in the conditions be? There's four conditions that you have, but do we have to, are we expecting to get detailed drawings and everything by, in two weeks?
That's what we're led to believe, Jay, yeah.
Okay, all right. And we're going to review them, but we can't vote at a workshop?
So, I thought we were going to let it be based on the department and the chairman?
We're going, we're going, we, I thought that, my thought was that we would come to conclusion tonight, vote on a motion, and that motion inclusive was going to be that the final say would rest on the board, on, on, on the, on the department. Can we not do that?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah. And, and I had enough nods out there to say, yeah, they're, they're willing to do that.
So, it's going to be subject to these conditions and final reviewed by the town engineer and the planning board chairman?
And, yes.
So, again, Mr. Chairman, I make that motion based on the conditions, et cetera, that we have discussed.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Oh, well.
Next. Michelle?
Next item on the agenda is case number PB 1508-2. Upon the matter of request by Dynamic Engineering acting as agent for Ronda Quaid's Favorite Chicken LLC for revised site plan approval to retrofit an existing bank building into a Popeyes restaurant and drive-through with related site improvements on premises 1,000 East Ridge Road, Georgetown Plaza in a C business district.
Do they have the right to say Ronda Quaid's Favorite Chicken before it's even built?
Good evening. I'm Robert Frude with Dynamic Engineering, representing your new favorite chicken restaurant. I got behind me a colored version of the site plans that we're presenting, as was indicated. It's a conversion of the now unused bank branch building at the plaza on Ridge Road. And we're looking to convert the building without changing the square footage into a Popeyes restaurant, utilizing the same drive-through window as a drive-through for the Popeyes. Improvements are very limited within the building, minor improvements outside the building, provide some additional directional striping for the drive-through, improved handicap striping and access in the front, as well as pedestrian access from Ridge Road and a bike rack. And those were at, as requests from your engineering review from Lobella Associates, which we had submitted revised plans by email and overnight Friday and today. The building itself is 2,830 square feet. And it will have 50, approximately 50-some seats within it. As I indicated, we received the August 17th Lobella review letter, addressed the comments with the plan revisions noted. We've also received on August 19th a review from the Monroe County Department of Planning and Development. Review of those comments, we have no objection to addressing those comments. For the most part, they're either very minor technical comments or reviewing jurisdictional items that we can address.
So, if I'm reading this correctly, the only thing that came out of the workshop that you differ with is the internally illuminated sign?
That's correct. The signage is, is very modest on this building. Only the letter, general letters of the name Popeyes will be illuminated, very consistent with the rest of the shopping center and the rest of Ridge Avenue. Not requesting any variances for size. We're well below the size limits.
I was actually somewhat surprised to see that we made that comment because generally that's just in the Muck district, which I don't believe this is. And I would agree with you that internally illuminated signs are generally accepted along this corridor.
Leave the, the Sonic immediately across the street also has...
Right.
Obviously new internally illuminated signage.
Do we have questions from the board? Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I want to ask the staff, the, the prior use was a bank and the current use is going to be a drive-through restaurant. Is, is there an expectation that the traffic is going to increase, decrease, or stay the same from a restaurant, a drive-through restaurant use to a bank use? I, I thought that, the reason I'm asking is I thought that we, that we assumed that the, those two usages were essentially the same when it came to traffic.
Kerry said last week, or two weeks ago.
Kerry, Kerry added on to the part three of the EAF that the traffic generation associated with this type of future use will not significantly increase traffic to the site over and beyond what was contemplated under its previous use.
Okay. So, what I'm, the reason I'm wondering that is because, is why, why is, why does the county say that a traffic impact study is required? Why would you need a traffic study if you're using, if the, if the, if the usage is going to be the same as it was in the previous?
Well, it's a county right of way. I mean, it's a road and they, they could ask for a typical survey. Did you already do a traffic survey of the area for that?
We did not. And obviously, we just received the letter and I saw that comment. In our opinion, as was stated, a, a bank to a fast food restaurant is a relatively similar trip generation, especially in an instance like this where you're in a shopping center. So, it's almost the tail wagging the dog. The shopping center is what generates the traffic. Some of the traffic may be dual uses between the two. We do hope to speak to the county and have that requirement waived or a very simple...
In the past, this is...
Traffic statement would be provided.
This has been something the county is like...
Simple one, probably what they asked for.
It's kind of ridiculous for them to, in my opinion, to ask for a traffic impact study for the conversion of a bank to a restaurant in a commercial district at this point. I mean, we're on Ridge Road and this is one of their standard little things that I don't think that they really fully think through. And at the town, in the past, I know that the town has given a little bit of pushback as to whether we're going to require an applicant to do something like this and it's...
Peter, looking at some of the recent construction, and I mean, right, right across the street from that, there has to be a relatively recent...
Right.
Study done.
Exactly.
I think they just want them to give their numbers from the Popeyes, just a general information. I don't think it will take a deep, long one, exactly what you said, because there's been so many in the area. But they want to know what you, you think your generation is and just touch base with them.
I, I would agree. In sort of traffic speak, we probably would not do a full study because of all the activity that's happened, the recent signal improvements and things that will time that. What we'll provide are more of a traffic statement, which will be a comparative analysis of this is how many trips a bank in a shopping center generate and how many trips fast food in a shopping center generate, and to show that the difference is nominal, if anything. And that typically gives them something that they can carry for their data and know what the projected trips are for the entire shopping center.
Georgetown Plaza certainly has the capacity for a huge amount of parking that's underutilized there.
Right.
Which I would think is...
Mr. Chairman, the only other comment I have is that the, is that particular plaza, mainly because of Mr. McDonald's travels in there, is very dangerous because he cuts through and he drives diagonally. And, and, and actually, a lot of people do that because there's no islands in that, in that plaza. And I, I don't think that this project, you know, requires, you know, the installation of islands to, to, to create a traffic flow that's, you know...
Well, I, I somewhat agree with you, but I think part of the problem is that the plaza's severely underutilized and a lot of the businesses are vacant. And once cars start to park in there, it doesn't allow that vertical, you know, that angular traffic through there.
Well, it may be that, that may be true, Mr. Chairman, but it may be that there's just way too many parking spots that were required initially.
At the time, I think that there probably were and I don't know how to, I mean, if you're asking this applicant to remove parking from the plaza...
No, no, I'm not asking, I'm just stating that it's, it's, and I also don't think that it, it should require islands as well. But I'm just stating that that's a relatively dangerous parking lot to drive through. It'd be a good place to have driving tests because if you can not get hit.
Well, I, I think that some activity and some parking will help to reinforce the fact that it's not easy to drive through there diagonally. And I'm hoping that the chicken place will have enough seating that some people will stay there and park there and employees and rejuvenate that area.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Rich?
At the workshop, we had a, a pretty lengthy discussion about this, this project and we talked at length, as Jay properly brings up now, about the, the concerns about traffic safety and the way people cut across. Unfortunately, I'm not sure there's anything about this project we can do to change that. And, and your point is well-taken that a crowded parking lot addresses that. There were a number of other issues that all appear to have been addressed on the plans, with the exception of the lighting of the sign and if I recall that, it was, it was a suggestion that we give everybody in town... that we give everybody in town, when we are able to control it in the muck, we do. Unfortunately, we can't control it necessarily on Ridge Road. I still think the, the lighting design that we suggested as a possibility is a better one, but we also understand your, your position on that. We also discussed, I recall, the, we wanted something here regarding the types of garbage cans to be sure that those canned tops are not blowing around the parking lot, and that there was a number of them available, and, and that the plans denote that now as we requested, so. I think the plans originally were very detailed, and, and what you did to address our issues has been very well received by me at least, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ray?
I agree with you.
Put your mic down. Pull your mic down.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. I agree with you, Rich. Question, and this might be more for the staff. Is there enough handicap parking with 54 seats? Is there something there?
Yeah, they meet their quota.
Showing one handicap parking spot? That's enough?
Yes.
Okay, as we discussed it at the workshop. I agree with you on the lighting, but again, there's not much we can do. That's all I have.
Ray? I mean, Bernie?
At, at the workshop, there was a lot of discussion about the parking, like we talked about tonight. And to be honest, I went there and I looked, and the striping does tell you what to do. But I myself never looked at it before, and I think to your point, nobody does look at it, so I don't think there's much improvement, because it tells you you can't turn left. It tells you you got to go straight, there's a solid line. But I don't know what else you could do, so. To that point, I, I don't know if anybody else has looked at it, but I never really paid attention to it myself before. Besides that, I think you addressed everything.
Barry?
Everything that we discussed in the workshop has been covered tonight.
I'm quite satisfied.
At this point, I'd like to open it up to public input. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to this application may do so at this time. Going to close the public input portion of this. Get my act together here for a second.
Mr. Chairman, I've, I'm, after, we reviewed the SECR, the short environmental assessment form. So it looks like it's an unlisted action, probably negative declaration.
Yeah, I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, that with regard to this application, and SECR, that we declare this an unlisted action with a negative declaration.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Seeing none, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, sorry, if I may, can we, can we combine the approval for PB 1508 and the Town Board refer Can we combine those two into one resolution?
Because it's not a resolution. We have a separate, we have a separate matter. We'll, let's finish this one, and then we'll just move to that matter.
Okay, all right.
That's our formality and our code about special permits for restaurants, kind of.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if we could, if we could combine the two at that, so.
Technically, the last item for our action, and we can spare.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of PB 1508-2 upon the matter of request by Dynamic Engineering, acting as agent for Aranacoit's Favorite Chicken LLC, for revised site plan approval to retrofit an existing bank building into a Popeyes restaurant and drive-through with related site improvements on premises 1,000 East Ridge Road, which is Georgetown Plaza, in a C Commercial Business District.
What's the motion?
I move approval.
I'll second it.
I said that originally.
No, I, I thought you were going to do it subject to the town Well, he made all the revisions.
Yeah, the revisions are me.
So I think the final site plan is the one that we're approving, with the exception of the sign, and I'm, I think we're all not opposed to this sign. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you for investing in Aranacoit. I don't know, I think we should stay in order, because there's a lot of people here for the other matters. But just so you know, I don't think there's going to be any issue. We're going to, I don't want to be presumptuous, but it's a formality, the referral to the Town Board.
Thank you.
Next matter, please.
The next matter is a sketch plan conference, request by Alan J. Knopf Esquire, acting as agent for Lighthouse Point Property Associates LLC, for sketch plan conference to construct a plus or minus 256 multifamily dwelling units, apartments, condominiums, and a clubhouse on premises 951 and 1027 Thomas Avenue, and 95 Pattonwood Drive, and City of Registered Tax Par, Tax Parcel 047.18-2-99, comma 047.780-1-6, comma, -7, 8, 9, and 10, in a RH River Harbor District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go ahead. My name is Alan Knopf, I am attorney for Lighthouse Point Property Associates LLC, and we want to thank you for this opportunity to formally present our sketch plan to the planning board. I'm here tonight with some of the other members of Lighthouse Point, Charlie Morgan, Gordon Howe, Joe Catalani, I think Alan Adams in the back. And we've been working on this project for quite, quite a long time, and we feel it's going to be a tremendous development for the town and for the area, and allow Aranacoit to take advantage of its riverfront location. This is exactly the type of development that Aranacoit has planned for over 15 years, beginning with the 1999 Pattonwood Stutzon Plan, the River Harbor zoning in 2001 that called for this kind of development. The, the project will also provide sorely needed luxury apartments and condos that will fill a real demand in the area in Aranacoit. It's going to be a green development. Not only are we going to clean up Brownfield, we're going to provide a public park along the waterfront to allow public access to the water, exactly the sort of thing that's been called for in the town's plans, the comprehensive plan, et cetera. And hopefully showcase the waterfront like other communities like Toronto and Boston do. We say, why can't we do that kind of thing here in Aranacoit and in Rochester? The plan is for about 256, 260 residential units, both luxury apartments and condominiums. We would also have a commercial pad probably out on Thomas Avenue. There's no plan for that other than to provide for it in the overall plan. We're under contract with Al Gilbert to buy his property, and we also plan to buy some of the property that's owned by the City of Rochester. The city would retain ownership of the waterfront, so that as, as basically the, under the public trust doctrine, to maintain that in public ownership. So some of that waterfront park that we would create would, would retain, be retained by the, by the city. We are going to have sidewalks for public access, again, the promenade along the waterfront for the, for the public to enjoy the water. We're going to improve the waterfront, so the boaters will, will have a, a better location and provide some amenities for the boaters that they do not have today. The, the property, as you well know, is in the Brownfield Cleanup Program. This has been classified as a brownfield. I'll digress a little bit into the history. The Vanderbilt built the railroad along the, the river, left kind of a swampy area that was filled in both south and north of the bridge, and in this case, with mainly industrial waste, to create land that we're going to be building on today. We did have a long process with the DEC. We actually won in the New York Court of Appeals, the highest court of the state, to allow this site into the Brownfield program, because they didn't want a landfill. I don't really understand why, but they had a problem with landfills going into this program. Now, we're working closely with the DEC, they've been very cooperative. Over the last few years, we've done a remedial investigation, studied the site, and we have proposed a remedial plan. Mainly will be a site management plan. We are going to have to restrict use of the property, so you cannot do single-family detached because of the contamination in the landfill material. Also would have a cap on the site. Our design calls for, as an extra layer protection, generally parking, open parking under the buildings, sort of a belt and suspenders approach, so that any issue from possible vapor intrusion is, is addressed, both by the, by the barrier and then having the, the open air. The, but that's, that's a process we're going through. It'll still be some time to work out the final site remediation plan. And just so you're aware, there's a separate site, the, that we also got into the program, the riverfront site, that is not part of this development. Only the, excuse me, the inland site is not part of this development. This site is the riverfront site, it was recently remapped, so the riverfront site is only the area south of the bridge. The, the site is in the River Harbor District, which specifically calls for medium to high-density development and multifamily. This is exactly the area of the town that was zoned for this sort of development. Following the Pattonwood Plan, the 2001 zoning, even the comprehensive plan last year recognized this area for this sort of more medium to high-density development along the riverfront with a public access, again, taking advantage of the waterfront like other communities around the country do. We don't need any use variance or, or rezoning, because we're in line with zoning. We know that the town has classified part of the site as an EPod. We, we recognize that the current owner, Mr. Gilbert, cut some trees last year. We had, and again, we've told the board this, but just to reassure everyone, we had absolutely nothing to do with that. We learned about it after the fact. We understand the town's concern, the neighbors' concern. Our plan is to plant trees. We want to put in a buffer, we want to make this a green site, and to make it a beautiful site. So that is, that is what we want to do. And, and we think that will, will hopefully, as we work through this process, mitigate any issues from the removal of trees. Again, this will be a green development. Besides cleaning up the Brownfield, we're going to have a green stormwater plan, public access, provide for alternative energy, green space, bike racks, parking. We're going to allow the public and boaters to have parking, so they have access to the waterfront. As you know, part of the site is in the City of Rochester, so we also will have to deal with the, the city, we've met with the city many times, and we anticipate an intermunicipal review with a committee with, hopefully with some of the planning board members and the, and the town staff, along with city staff, to try to review and work through the process and coordinate issues. And right now, we're working on, as you know, this is only a sketch plan. Right now, we're working on putting together our environmental assessment. We've commissioned a traffic study. We're going to do an analysis for visual impacts. That's something we're going to be working on. We did meet with the neighbors. They, some of the neighbors, as you know, did not, were not in favor of development of this area. They wanted to have the area left in its present state undeveloped. Well, we think that's an unrealistic expectation, some of the concerns. The neighbors had some legitimate questions and issues, things like how we're going to handle security in two different municipalities with the fire and, and police, how are we going to impact their views. We asked, and some of the neighbors agreed, that we could go onto the property to, to work with them to try to have, you know, see what their views were. As you know, some of those areas are very, and there's a lot of trees there, so there's a limited view for some of the, some of the people, at least in the summertime. So we're going to have to work through those issues. They had concerns about property values. Frankly, we think their property values will increase with this development, but we understand their, their concern, and it's something we want to, to address. We'd appreciated the board's input so far, as you know. We've made some changes to the site plan to address some of the board's concerns. We turned around the parking, we added some buffer in the sidewalks and all that. And we want to continue to hear your input to make this a better development for the, for the town, for the neighbors, and for, for our community. Again, Aranacoit is where the land meets the water, and we want to take advantage of that and have the community be able to take advantage of that with this sort of development. At this point, I would like to turn the podium over to John Shoraba, who is our consultant on, land planner on this development. He's going to go through the, the development. Also, Al Partey, our architect, is here. If you have any questions about the, Al has some of his elevations and plans here for you to look at. If you have any questions, Al can answer them. Also, Joe Catalani, one of our partners, is here, who is a real estate broker, and is going to address some of the issues as far as the, the use and marketing of, of the properties, or, you know, of, of the development.
Hi, again. I think Alan did an excellent job overviewing the project, but I will just kind of go back into the plan itself. The site that we're looking at is 13 and a half acres south of the bridge, in North Beaconview Drive. We have access off of Thomas Avenue. We have utilities running along Thomas Avenue, we have water, gas, electric. Sanitary sewer will be looked at several ways. This site will require a lift station of some sort. We're at the lowest point of Aranacoit. There is an existing sanitary sewer on the east side of Thomas Avenue near Eaton Drive, which we could have sewer go to. Alan mentioned that a traffic study has been commissioned, that is ongoing currently, and we'll be able to provide that in the near future. Alan also mentioned meeting with the neighbors. That's kind of what I was, wanted to get a lot of information from the neighbors, and share your concern. I'm sure they will as, as well. Number one, their concern was buffering. Going at this property, how do we, how do we address buffering? The, the railroad has its own trees and vegetation along that, and how can our plan augment that, improve that, and try to screen what we have going on there? That's one of their concerns. The other concern is noise, lighting, drainage, things like that, and then Alan mentioned security. Some of those concerns we can handle on the engineering end. We continue to want to solicit information from the neighbors and from you, obviously outside agencies, the Conservation Board and things like that. The site is generally flat, except near the railroad along the south property line. There's an approximately a 10-foot drop from the railroad down to the flat portion. As we move through the plan, and I think, Mr. Partey can do better, explain the building itself. But the first floor of the building where people are going to be living on is actually elevated. We are parking below that, so when we talk about the first floor, that's going to be 12 to 15 feet higher than the grade. So our parking car is underneath, then you've got the first floor. So that's some of, as we move through the plans, and as you think about this project, those are what we have to look at. So there'll be parking under the, under the buildings. We have proposed parking, approximately 420 spots on this site. That's a combination of outdoor parking and underground parking. And basically, we also want to have, if you look at the plan, we have parking lots on the north inside the south ends of this. So we feel that the public can park down there, get on the trail, migrate down the trail, maybe go to schooners, eventually, wherever they want to as they go north. We also are incorporating a lot of elements to this plan for the community that's there, so that these townhomes and condos are going to have a lot of outside elements, rooftop gardens, skating areas, game gardens, skating areas, game areas, basketball courts, things like that that they can use that are parallel with the promenade that is going to be designed in front of them along the river. So those are the elements that we're going to be talking about, I think, as we move forward in this project. This is sketch plan. You're not looking at elevations, grading, and things like that. We haven't got to that level. What I want as a site engineer is to get more information. We could work around it if there's grading challenges. Alan mentioned capping and things like that, so moving a lot of material off this site is probably not going to happen with the contamination that's there. So we're going to be, capping is done both with buildings and blacktop. That is stabilizing the contaminants that are there. We'll also be putting in these grass areas, bringing new material over to cap that. So it's not going to be a lot of material coming offsite, probably bringing more on. But I'm concerned, as a resident of the town, I want to make this the best project we can. It is in my backyard as well, and I want this to be a beacon for the town of Arundicoid, and I think it will. So that's really where I am with this project, and again, want more information to make this great. So I think at this point, I'll let Al talk about the buildings.
I'll be brief, because Al pretty much said everything I was going to say. Al pretty much spoke to everything that, a lot of the things that I was going to speak to. I'm Joe Catalani, one of the partners in Lighthouse, also the owner of the local Caldwell Banker franchise in town. I guess the main points that I take away from this from a real estate perspective is the fact that, and this was true with the last director of development here in town, as well as I think the current, Arundicoid has no stock in luxury apartments. The county has no stock in condominiums to speak of that are as-built, that aren't apartment conversions, which really aren't the same. Reedman is doing one down in the canal. Sagamore was built with great fanfare down in the city. But nothing has been built in this county that I'm aware of that is this amenity-rich. And this is the showcase to the town of Arundicoid on the northwest passage. On the east side of town, you know, the wonderful job on 590 has made that introduction to Arundicoid wonderful. The west side is not bad, but to come over a bridge and to see this kind of development where my mother could have lived, where I will live, as soon as my daughter's off to college, there's no question, I will move here. To have a mix of this going on and have all this activity, we have market studies that say, sure, the absorption is there and it'll support it, but from your own perspective, look at this town. There is no stock, and there's not going to be any new stock either in luxury townhouses, any kind of density in condominiums, only because there's no land left. So this does a lot of things. It increases the tax base. It takes kids, doesn't put them in, pupils in the school. It actually can reduce taxes, the only thing that can, as far as a product of real estate. And at the same point in time, gives the town what it really needs. Right now, millennials don't buy houses until they're thirty-four typically, and retirees don't have a place to go after they sell their home when they start having maintenance issues. They don't want to own a home, but there's no real alternative. My father lives at Spiezio's Place down there at the end of, next to Alackland's there. It's a conversion apartment. I'd like to put him in this. It's more for him than just living in a place that was converted apartments. And the fact that the main plaza has the ability for people to interact with younger people on the plaza and live in a condominium style for some older people is fantastic. And then there's condominiums off to the side, so that if people want to be to a quieter side, they can live in those condominiums. But there's such a great attraction to have this promenade, to have maybe an open-air market underneath that bridge where people can gather, and to connect this site through Shumway to the Rochester Yacht Club and the district down in Somerville. I mean, you could have quite a nice mile and a half, two-mile walk through Arundicoid and do many different things. And that's really it.
I think that, just one other thing I wanted to mention was the phasing. We would be starting with a larger building up by the bridge, and it probably, you know, we would anticipate this would take several years to fully build, you know, at least two, three years to build out. So we would be starting up by the bridge and moving later on to the south, depending, you know, how fast the units went and all. So I think that pretty much finishes our presentation. Al Partey can answer any questions you have about the building design, if you want to ask him or any one of our team, if, you know, you have questions or comments or suggestions, et cetera. But thanks for the opportunity.
Well, just so everyone knows, it's not a public hearing, so the public can view and listen to the presentation, but it's not open to public input. But it is open to input from the board.
Right. And just to clarify, the public will have ample opportunity to discuss and address us at that phase.
So the sketch conference is what's not subject to a public hearing, but there will be opportunity for public input along the way as the project makes its way through the phases of preliminary, final site plan approval, and the like.
Now, may I ask a question? When I look at the rendering for the buildings here, what I'd really like to see is I'd like to see what this would look like from the backyard of the residence. Unobstructed, there are a lot of mature trees there, and then, you know, we haven't seen what you can or will or are looking to keep. But very honestly, I spent several hours the last two weekends at the place, and I walked the entire length of the property that you have. And I, there's, I can't see the river from anywhere, from on top of that hill. I can see across, and it's a picturesque looking across the river, but I can't see the water. When I look down, I can see the docks, but only through a potpourri of sheds that are on the property. Well, you say that, my assumption is that Gilbert now rents those areas.
Right.
And you will not own that area? Is that, I missed something.
The very frontage, I'm not sure we even quite worked it out with the city, but, you know, the front, like, I don't know if it's thirty feet, or I'm not sure the exact dimension, but the city would retain ownership. And right now, they lease to Mr. Gilbert and allow him to use the docks. So they would, at some point, you know, we would build the promenade and probably have to redesign the way the, you know, the boaters are situated, possibly give them storage or whatever. We are designed, we have a two-level promenade, basically a promenade, and then you step down to another area where the boaters would be, down by the water. So, you know.
So the, the temper of the look that I currently get, the aesthetics of that, they will change?
Yes, yes, yes. At the waterfront, we hope it'll be beautiful, you know, it'll be a model waterfront design.
I don't see those people having much more than thirty feet. I mean, there's a piece of grass, the end of the dock, and then there are a lot of sheds.
Right, right. And eventually, not immediately, but eventually, we would be, that would be where the promenade would be for the public to go through. We'd still provide for the boater, so they have areas to keep their stuff and whatnot, But I understand the concern about the views. I mean, I guess we got some conflicting, some people have told us they want their views, and then we didn't really see, at least in the summertime. I understand the wintertime's different, the views, but, I mean, we can either increase the buffering, so, you know, so people don't see this, or, you know, if some people want to see down through to see the development, because it's going to be a beautiful development, so.
As I said, I walked away quite puzzled, because there wasn't, for me, a real picturesque look down there until I looked over the boats, period.
Well, my name's Al Partey. I'm the architect on this project, and what I want to say is that we have six buildings on this site.
Hold on a second. Let me give you a microphone.
No, you have to speak into the microphone, unfortunately.
Yeah, we're on the air.
The main building, there is one hundred and twenty-eight units. It's going to have a clubhouse, exercise room, meeting rooms, and a plaza that opens up to the river. Then, on the perimeter, we're going to have five smaller buildings. They're going to be eighteen units to thirty units. And those buildings are going to be two and three stories above the parking, so that you're not going to be seeing a four-story building on the perimeter. We've done this to scale the project down at the perimeter and to give interest to the site.
I think, with all due respect, sir, I can't visualize it, because I stand at the top of the hill now, I can't see the river for a shed. I can't imagine what I'm going to see with a four-story building, or three, or two.
Well, that's, you're talking about from Beacon View Court.
I'm talking about, no, I didn't, I'm talking about the railroad bed. That's where I went. I went to the railroad bed. And I didn't step in the bed, I stayed on the crest.
Right.
All right. I'll give you my comments, and they're not in probably great order, and some of them are going to be frank, okay? And looking at the site plan, to me, it doesn't seem, and as right it should be at this point, very well-developed, in my opinion. And that, it needs some work to get to the point where I would like to see something that would be, you know, which is obvious that that's what needs to occur, if, obviously you don't have a final site plan now.
Right, right.
And to that end, I would recommend you look at some of these items and provide input and answers and how you would address and what your opinions are and what led you to these opinions when they remapped. To me, it seems when looking at this right now, the public amenities are not proximal to public parking. And that if you're proposing public amenities, you need to provide parking associated with them in some way, shape, or form, because of the fact that you're going to have this public-private mix, and parking control is going to become a huge issue down there. If apartments or condos or townhomes have parking spots that are dedicated to them, and it's a big river event down there, and people just come in unfettered, without any control or access control, there's going to be just a constant parking issue. To that end also, I don't, I just don't see really good separation. I mean, most of the time with condos, people are going to want a gate or some type of access. They're not going to want, you know, you've got to tell me how you're dealing with this public promenade and these private residences, and how is that going to be dealt with, and how, when people come down there, they're going to want to get into their home, and they're going to want to have some security to it. The amenities seem a little bit haphazard at this point. I think that they're looking for space and just, you stuck a basketball court, we need one, let's put one by the river. I don't know if that's the right location or why it's there. You have the ice skating rink, and again, you know, the shuffleball here, the pickleball's there, the basketball's there. I just wonder why, if there's any, you know, control over those, are those public basketball courts? Are you going to have a tennis court, see where you have a key card, or how does that work? I feel that right now, looking at the large building, is not really sensitive to the water. I understand why you're raising it up, but right now, it's a big black hole hovering over the water. The view from the waters is important, is the view from the residences. I don't think that this is as elegant of a waterfront concept as I would like to see. There's also no relationship right now to the number of bedrooms in the units, to the parking. You know, a lot of times, a two-bedroom unit's going to want to have two parking stalls. And I don't know, right now, just by saying a three- and four-story building, I don't really know what the number of bedrooms you're proposing for those uses. Also, those buildings, those smaller buildings, seem like you're indicating those, there's some units that are on the front and some are on the back. So the ones that are on the back, and maybe I'm wrong interpreting the drawing wrong, seem like they will have no view of the water, and how is that going to be marketed? To me, it should be more of a townhouse style, where units are side-by-side-by-side, so that they have their own view shed. I don't know why you would want to buy a condo on the river that looked upon the railroad track at this point. The other thing is the interaction with the residential units and the marina. Where's, how is the marina functioning, going to function on? I don't see any facilities for any control or marina operations, you know, that, how are they renting it? Who's in charge? Where's the management building? Who's the sales and leasing office? How is all that going to be handled? Is that just going to be completely unfettered or run? How is that run? And I know you're still having, talking about Gilbert having, maintaining that operation, so how does that interact with your property? I could see potential conflicts between what's going on with the marina and what's going on with the residents, you know. Parking on the exterior. I see golf cart parking, which, you know, is fine for the summer, but I'm not sure who those are functioning for during the winter. You know, I don't think you could park your golf cart outside during the winter. If there are going to be golf carts on property, where are they going to go during the winter? And how does that work? And right now, you know, I think that the project lacks some of the art associated with design, and it seems a little bit severe, and it doesn't really provide a great front to the water. I don't know how it relates to the water. You know, I've seen a lot of waterfront developments that are somewhat different than this. I don't, and I don't know what the answer is, I'm just posing the question. I think that these units just don't really affront the river in a way that I think is And the thing I think that is the most difficult and really needs to be addressed is this, how is this public-private mix going to work? And I think it's a great idea in theory, but I want to, you know, see how it works in actuality. I've seen apartment-condo mixes, and generally, there's a big road, and then there's a condo road, and there's a gate, and the condo people could go in there, and there's no mix between the parking and how they work and, you know, and how they interact with the apartments. And they have their own pools, they have their own amenities, because of the fact that that condo association is responsible for the stuff that's associated with their property. And you have to have a condominium association, who's going to maintain all that? And that mix is really going to be something that you need to think about and present to us, and how that's going to be addressed.
Okay.
I think that's about it.
All right. Thanks. Well, we'll go over your list and see what, you know, we can address. As far as the...
And I don't mean that you have to address them all today. I don't think that this is the time.
I mean, some of the parking, I mean, the, under the building parking is going to be exclusively for the residents.
Well, if you're telling me that there's a one-to-one, you know, that's, that's all got to, I don't know what the parking numbers are right now.
Well, it doesn't, it will provide, it'll probably provide one-to-one or close to that. I know at South Point, it's something similar to that, one-to-one with the units, but then we're going to need some of the surface parking also. The concept was the north and south ends, maybe further away from the residents, would be open for the public. We're not, I guess we weren't really, we were kind of up in the air as to whether, like, the one, like this parking area, whether we would close it off or want to have it...
And I don't expect to have all the answers today. This is what I'm seeing, that needs to be, you know, evolved and thought out.
As far as the marina, you know, we would have a marina operator, whether it's Mr. Gilbert or Shumway or whatever. We haven't worked out that detail, but we would expect that we will have a, somebody in the marina business running the slips. And it would be serviced by one- And it would be serviced by one of the marinas north of the bridge.
I would think if you're buying a condo here, you're going to want a slip and a lot of times slips and condos go together and, I don't know.
Yeah, you would have...
You don't have control of the slips right now and I'm sure that you're probably trying to endeavor to do that, but maybe not.
Well, we do have, we do have an option where we're guaranteed our residents can, you know, will get a slip somewhere, so. But the existing boaters, we want to have stay also, so, you know.
You do until they're playing Van Halen at midnight.
Yeah.
Maybe you're a Van Halen fan, but not that I'm not, but it does have a different allure to it at midnight.
Right, right.
So those are my comments. Does anyone else have comments from the board?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
If I may, would you put your mic down? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Knopf, what's this retail building here? What is this retail building anticipated to be at the corner of Thomas and Pattonwood?
As I indicated, we don't have a specific plan. The, you know, we thought that the front, it's zoned for, you know, there's a number of different uses that are allowed as of right, office, pharmacy, you know, banks, there's a lot of different uses that are allowed in the RH district. We do not have any specific use right now.
Okay. Our chairman specified a lot of my concerns and clearly I walked this as well as Mr. Palermo has. The most glaring concern that I would have originally is the buffering for those people on the corner of Thomas and Pattonwood.
Can you speak up, please?
I'm sorry?
Speak up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ray's shy.
I am, I'm very shy. I'm sorry. I have a lot of concern for the people at the corner of Pattonwood and Thomas Avenue, the buffering, et cetera, noise, as well as visual, et cetera. I'd have to see a lot more as it related to that to protect them and their property values, et cetera. I think it's very important. I personally, for me to be able to go further, especially as I'm looking at this type of rendering, okay, which seems a little crazy to me, I, that doesn't, that just doesn't do it. As far as we're concerned, I'd like to see, you know, even a working model, if at all possible, to truly visualize what we're really looking at. But again, a lot of the other concerns that I have have already been mentioned.
All right.
Jay Rich, anybody?
I can, I'll go next. Mr. Knopf, I've got a couple of quick questions for you. How many docks are there now?
About 200.
About 200 docks?
Yes.
And how many units are there going to be, total?
260, about.
Okay.
And normally, our experience is normally 50% of the people want to have a boat slip in this area, give or take.
All right. And are you going to eliminate the sheds completely? Are you going to, you're going to gang them so that they're actually not as they are now or are you going to, I mean...
In the short term, no. In the long term, in order to put the promenade in, I think those would have to be, there had to be a change and we would have to provide some other facility for the boaters.
Okay. And you're going to, part of when you come before us, you're going to have a plan for that?
Yes.
All right. And then, you said there's 420 spots and you said that you, as I understand, you expect to have about one-to-one underneath the residents and...
No, it's 1.5 to one, but, yeah, but Alan, I made a calculation, we've got a whole lot more than most people.
Well, how many, you're going to, are, are people going to be, or the residents, are they going to be required to have a specific, you know, can they only have one car or two cars or underneath, or can they have a car underneath and two cars outside or...
I think they're only going to be allowed one spot underneath the extent. Certainly the condo owners would get a spot underneath. And then, as far as the apartment dwellers, whether there may not, if there's enough, to the extent there's room, they would get a spot underneath probably and the rest, your second car would have to be on the surface.
So, because if you're, if these are high-end condos...
Yeah.
And you've got 420 spots and 260 condos, is there a chance, is it...
There wouldn't be 260 condos.
Or 260 units?
Right.
Is there a chance that the 420 spots that you have would just be taken up by the residents? And then there wouldn't be any, any spots for, I mean, how many spots, extra spots would you have for boaters? How many? It doesn't sound like there's going to be a lot of spots for...
There was another 75 underneath the bridge that was sort of parked over there.
So are we talking about 495 spots then or...
It's a free with total. If possible, come into the workshop in a couple of weeks, we can address many of these questions.
Okay.
With all due respect to, I don't know, the parking could be fully vetted tonight.
I don't want to fully vet it, I just want to understand, I want to get the, I'm trying to get a...
Right, and there was a balance between...
Actually, I'm trying to figure out whether there really is any parking for people outside the condo areas and...
And there was a balance here between you want to provide enough parking, but we also don't want to have this, we want to have it a beautiful site and we don't want to have it all blacktop either, you know, so, I mean, that's...
Okay. This is a brownfield project?
Yes.
So do you have to, do you still have to vent the areas to...
We don't expect that this area, because it's more industrial waste and north of the bridge was more municipal garbage, we're definitely going to have to vent. This area, we didn't have the municipal garbage that causes the methane.
Right.
So we think the methane isn't so much of an issue. So we probably don't have to vent the underneath. We would have still a vapor system under the buildings to stop any vapor intrusion.
Okay. And you're going to have to go into, you're going to have to go down into bedrock to put the buildings up or are you going to be on, no?
From the Plumbary Geotech, the bedrock is over 100 feet deep. So this would be on pilings of some sort, engineered pilings.
Yeah, this does really drop off. If you recall, they had a terrible time putting the bridge in.
Yes.
So there are some areas, I think, I don't exactly, I think sort of this area, the bedrock isn't too bad, it might only be like 40 feet or something like that, but then it's sort of a cliff and does really drop off, so we would have to do some alternate.
Okay. I won't take up all your time, but one other thing that I'd really like to see is, well, when we do viewscapes, that's something that we need to see, but I'd like to, you have lines that show the height above sea level. It'd be good to know what the height above sea level it would be at the top of the buildings as their, as their plan.
Right.
To see what, how they relate with respect to the houses along Beacon View especially. And I guess one other thing is, it'd be, well, I think Peter already mentioned that it's difficult to figure out what the buildings that are on the, on the east side of this are going to gain from, from this development if they're not going to have any kind of a waterfront view. And it would be good to, it looks like you're taking up all the viewscape of the residents of, along Beacon View. And so that's something that we need to address as well. I think that's all my...
Just briefly, we've heard today about possible additional parking underneath the bridge. I see there's mention of an open-air market and a vent stage. To the extent that this riverfront site is part of your bigger design, I think we need to, because we keep hearing about when there's an issue, it can be addressed by areas outside the riverfront site, for example, parking. I need to have a better understanding of where this fits in with your total plan.
Okay.
What's going to be north of the bridge? What is going to remain? What's going to change? I know this is your first phase and I understand the economics of it and how you have to have a first phase, but I'd like to get a better understanding of what the overall end project is going to be in the area.
I mean, right now, we're only planning development south of the bridge. We do have an option to buy property north of the bridge, but there's no plan for that right now, so.
Yeah, and in that respect then, if you've got X number of boats there now and your residential units are talking about 50% boat ownership, you know, those numbers just don't work. So you have to have somewhere else you're going to allow people to have boats unless you're going to get rid of everybody that's there.
Right, okay, I see what you're saying, right.
So there needs to be some sort of agreement or understanding with other marina owners in the area, I would imagine.
Right, right.
So I, so to the extent that there's a long-term plan, I'd like to hear more about it, but at the same time, I understand the economics of it.
Thank you.
Bernie?
Sure. Mr. Knopf, I was wondering, you only briefly talked about the phases and you said you're going to start with the large building and then move.
Yes.
You probably can't get into a lot of detail until you have more of this worked out, but do you have an overall idea on how many buildings are going to be built first, second, how many phases?
Well, we would...
Any ideas or...
I mean, we would only build probably, you know, half of this building and then build the other half and only then would we move on to some of the other buildings. And, you know, we would anticipate taking, you know, two, three, four, four years to go through the process. Obviously, it probably, it depends some on, on the market, you know. Our market study said there's a real demand for this and they will fill up, but, you know, obviously, we're going to, when we build it, we'll see how fast the units, we expect they're going to, the condo units will sell very fast, but, you know, we're going to have to actually do it, so.
But the condo buildings are not in this first-phase building?
No, the...
Other than those two that, one Joe's going to buy and the other one?
The front portion is condos. The front portion here is, of these buildings, the buildings are the mix, so the back of it is apartments and the front along the, along the water would be condo.
Yeah, and that's one of the big questions I have, is this apartment-condo mix and how's that going to work? Because I don't see it working personally and you're going to have to convince me.
Okay.
So building on that first question, where do you see the promenade and the other facilities that the public would use coming into play?
I think probably after the first building is built, then moving ahead and building the promenade. Frank, we probably would, in cooperation with the town, previously we had applied for some grant money also from the state under the LWRP program, so we probably would want to do that. I mean, we would commit to do this, but obviously that would be helpful and we could put more amenities in. And, you know, we think it would be great if some of the town or somehow the county or whatever could acquire more land to the, to the south and extend a trail all the way to Seneca Park so we could have, so the public could access all the way along, but that's not, that's not, that's not part of our plan.
So just so I understand, so you think the promenade and the public-use facilities will be part of the first phase? Is that...
I expect after the first building, so it would not be the first, maybe I'll say the second phase would be to do that because of the economics, frankly. Unless we got the grant, state grant earlier, because of the economics, we would need to probably put it as a second phase.
So you brought up the trail and I was just curious, this board, we saw Seneca feasibility trail, is that what it was called? Do we know what the current status of it is or have you even inquired yourself to know?
I mean, we've talked to CSX, Joe's talked to the CSX people about that and apparently they were told that the county and the town had...
County and the city bought up to Seneca Parkway, stopped there and then sold Skip Shumway, the back piece. So there's the piece from, from Thomas Avenue, a little bit, a little bit east of it, up to Seneca Parkway down the flats that's available. They want $1.2 million for it. And actually, you know, we talked to Skidery about that in the city and, you know, we were unclear as to whether they would want it to continue or not. But right now, it's for sale actively with CSX. So nothing you can do is chop it up here.
Yeah. So, I mean, we would like to, again, not part of our project per se, but we would like to try to facilitate that because I think it would just be wonderful for the community if we could, if people could, you have a public path on both sides of the river like you have in Boston or, you know, other major communities. And just so everybody has the opportunity, not just a few property owners on the water, so everyone gets to enjoy the waterfront.
So it's really an unknown at this point in time?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to follow up on it because I think it would be great. And frankly, that might give us an opportunity to have more docks as we extend down. That was one thought we had, if some of that land could be acquired, maybe we could have some more, more docks as we went in that direction.
Anything else, Bernie?
Yeah, so we talked a lot about the brownfield and you're addressing a lot of that with capping on site.
I'm sorry.
With capping, I think I heard it was called, where you're going to, you're going to...
Capping, I'm sorry. We would cap, we would have a site management plan, restricts the use so that you don't have, you can't have single-family detached, you can't have vegetable gardens, there's certain things you can't do. They want either restrict, what they call restricted residential, which is multifamily basically, or you can have commercial, that's what you would allow for this sort of a cleanup under the brownfield program and capping with either the concrete or asphalt. In the buildings, you would have a venting system under the concrete to make sure you don't have an issue with vapor intrusion. And we may have to put, we, it's not clear, we may have to bring in some clean soil to cap the green areas with a couple of feet of dirt and build it up to provide a separation and then that would be grass area. Or they may let us leave it as, depending if they're satisfied of whether the existing soil is, is at the surface is clean enough for now.
And there's a full soil studies that lists all the, categorizes all the soils and the subsoils and the conditions that's like...
Yeah, we've done a study, yes, yes.
Borings?
Yes, yeah. We got all kinds of studies, so we can, we'll make that available, you know, we got geotechnical and we got the environmental studies and, you know, we have a lot of studies.
So I guess the question I was leading up to is, are you aware of the DEC investigation that's starting on the river?
In the water, yes.
And how do you think that might affect this development?
Um, well, I mean, I think it'd be a positive in the long run because it's going to be great if they can clean, you know, what they, whatever they can do to clean up the river. So as far as the river sediments, there's, you know, there's an issue with, with, you know, things like silver in the water, in the sediments and some other contaminants, so it would be great if that could be cleaned up. Because again, our view is that, you know, our community just is not taking advantage of the wonderful waterfront setting we have. If we can clean the water and, you know, take care of a brownfield like this and make public access, it would just be great. But, yeah, so I think that's a positive if, you know, and I don't expect that there's going to be any like dredging or cleanup on our property or whatever, but, you know.
So you don't think there'll be anything that'll restrict the use of the water or...
Not in the long term, no. I mean, if they're doing a cleanup in the short term, there could be areas, like happened with the, you know, with the CSX with the train wreck, you know, they went in, they had to dredge, they had obviously restricted the use. I worked with one of the property owners with a restaurant on the, on the west side and, you know, we had to deal with, but there, there was a huge spill on, on the land also when they went out and did the sediment dredging out in the river. So that, you know, they may have to do something similar in the water depending how their study works out. But a lot of it may be upstream too because they have that whatever dead zone up by the 104 bridge and all, so I would anticipate maybe more would be up there.
And I don't have any experience, I don't know, do these things happen quick or...
No. They do not happen quickly.
So then, my other question is, this lot, we've all talked, I heard a lot of talk about the Beacon View neighbors, but there's a group of homes down in the right-hand corner. Is that a potential...
Yeah, they're right on Thomas.
Talking about these houses here.
Right.
Right. Right now, those are, you know, they're privately owned. Frankly, we would, would love to include it in development, but they are privately owned right now, so, you know, we'll do what we can to buffer the area. We'll be happy to buy any of the homes if people want to move out, but if they want to stay, that's their privilege and we will do our best to buffer.
I got one more question, I think it's more for Mr. Catalani. When he's, Mr. Knopf said you were going to talk about the effect on the real estate. I understood how you said this is going to really spruce up the area, but you didn't really address what it might do to the property values of those folks on Thomas, to the folks on Beacon View.
I think it'll increase their property values. And I'll be submitting studies that'll show that. I have studies from the Sierra Club, from the AIA, and from Harvard University that show this type of development, one of the fastest types of development, fastest-growing sectors of real estate right now in the United States, amenity-rich living, actually brings up values in the, in the nearby neighborhoods, does not decrease them. And there's many studies, I encourage you all, when you leave tonight, Google it up. You'll see study after study after study say the same thing about crime, about traffic, and about home values. They all say the same thing. And I have the studies, I have two of them anyways, there are hundreds of them. I can't find one that says the opposite. I encourage you to look into it. I do.
So just one more general question, I'm not sure-
And to the specific percentage, I don't know.
That's okay, I figured you're gonna get more into that as, as time goes on. But there's other developments being planned on the other side of the river.
Right.
Are, are those apartments, or are those condos?
They are, in fact, we just had a meeting with those folks two weeks ago. They are a compilation of hotel units, condominiums, and that's it. There are no apartment rentals over there. They range from 200 to 400 a square foot unfinished on the upper floors, the condos. And then they're talking about 60 to 70 rooms in a hotel, with the first floor being retail. That's their plan anyways, as of two weeks ago.
More mixed-use commercial, is it?
Yeah. And the synergy will, will, will help the area. Make no mistake that even that little shopping plaza down there, where that restaurant is closed, and some of the retail that, that has, has problems, when you put more people into the neighborhood, that will stabilize those sectors of real estate, without question.
So-
And grow it, actually.
So being in real estate-
In my opinion.
Because I, I looked up the Port of Rochester, what's going on there.
Yep.
And there actually was a comment that said, "They'll only include for-sale units, not rental apartments."
Correct.
"Privately-owned units generate significantly more property tax revenue than rental units and contribute more to the improving property values for all the residents of Charlotte."
Untrue. And here's the reason why.
I guess you can't, you can't, you can't under-
Well, but here's the, here's the actual facts.
You do agree that's what they said.
I, I don't know, I didn't read that. But I can tell you from fact that condominiums and apartments are taxed exactly the same. The revenue is the same that comes out from those units. They're apart, they're, they're taxed as apartments, even the condominiums. So I can tell you that they both will help lower taxes, because they're putting empty nester products in where pupils don't go in. The density, they're paying four times, actually, eight times the tax revenue, but only four of it comes out, because typically, they're taxed at 50% as apartments. But they're still four times, and they're not putting any pupils in the school, for the most part. So you actually can bring taxes down.
Well, all these questions are very interesting of the applicant, but it's still a preliminary phase. And I think the purpose of the sketch plan conference is to basic site design concept and generally determine the information to be required and provided on the preliminary site plan, so.
I think we've got all your questions, and we should, we'll go back and get answers for it.
There's still a couple more board members, but I think we're getting into technical questions on a preliminary plan that, to me, is an nth-degree step away from what we're gonna be finally, where the technical questions are really come to bear. And so if we could try to give them more information along the aspects like I just spoke to there, I think that's what's more meaningful then at this point.
So Peter, I, I don't agree. I think most of the people in the room would be very interested in that.
You cannot agree, but that's not the purpose of this, this meeting tonight.
But they're the ones that brought up that they wanted to talk about the real thing.
Well, I understand, then there's times to-
Why wasn't that stopped before it got there? I mean, that's all I wanna say, is I wouldn't have brought it up if it wasn't brought up.
All right, if you have more to comment on those regards, then do so.
So he didn't finish his comments, he said, he talked about the property tax revenue, but he didn't speak to improving-
But Bernie, you're also citing a comment that was made online, or I don't know where. If that was by an expert, then that, then-
I can give you the, if it was by the Port of Rochester, I can give you the URL, which is www.citerrochester.gov portal tag, and you'll see that comment.
But who, at any rate.
To echo the chairman's comments, I mean, it's, it's acceptable to consider some of the ancillary issues, but the primary focus of this evening should be to give the applicant feedback on the general layout of the site, the building locations as they proposed, and parking locations, things like that.
What I have an issue is, they're allowed to speak about it, but I can't ask questions? That's just wrong.
Oh, you could absolutely ask questions, but the primary thrust of the questioning and presentation should be-
I felt like I was shut down, and I don't think that was appropriate.
I'm sorry you felt like you were shut down, but I'm trying to get-
Well, I can't believe you allow them to speak about it, but I can't ask questions that I think are pertinent to what they brought up.
Well, in reality, then, they're, they're making a presentation on, on their regard. And it's, if you, continue along those lines if you like, then. But I'm just trying to give them meaningful information out of what the matter at hand is.
It's okay, I'm just saying if they can spring it up, I think we should be able to ask questions about it.
And I agree. What I was trying to do is focus the rest of the questions, if you wouldn't, to talk like taxes, and feel free. Mary?
I have a question about the parking. Is each building gonna have parking underneath?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That pretty much covers what I had, or bales the coverage.
May I follow up, just for clarification?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, he had his turn, what the heck?
Oh, I'm sorry, I just wanna follow up on the parking, just for clarification, Mike, I thought you spoke earlier, forgive me. Did I hear before that it would be one and a half per apartment, or is it one to one?
What? Yeah, 1.5 to 1. 1.5 spots, or, so each underneath?
Well, actually, there's a little bit more in our latest calculations, but what we show on the plan, 1.5 to 1.
Underneath?
Yeah.
I think we'll come out at the workshop.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, Mike, if, I'm sorry.
I got two questions now. Just help me something here with the, do you see the contour of the property as, as I walked it remaining the same? You're bringing in, you said, a couple of feet-
Yes.
-of cap.
Possibly, yes.
That's only, I'm certain, down at the lower end.
Right.
Does that raise that ground up so that when you put the parking, you're putting it below the cap?
No, we would not, because, because of the brownfield, we would not. Because of the water and the brownfield reasons, we're not going, we really don't have the option to go down for those two reasons. So we would be building up.
Okay, so that-
You were asking, is the, the fill that's bringing in two feet that they might be bringing in, are we building underneath that? That was the question, the fill just goes to the side of the building, the buildings go down.
Oh, I see, yeah.
If that was, I, I don't know.
No, that, that, that helps me, thank you.
Okay.
So, so in other words, the-
Right, we're not-
The building actually, will, will the building be placed before the fill is brought in?
Probably.
Okay. So you'll have, you'll have some kind of a mechanism to, to keep all the bed stuff down, and then you'll put the building, and then you'll fill?
Well, they'll, they'll, wherever, whatever engineers tell you. But typically, where there's, where there's good foundations, they'll do a typical footer. Where there's not, they'll do screws or heel screws to a point where they have, they'll take some amountage. And then they'll, they'll pour their footer to that, start building up, pour their walls, and then they'll bring that two-foot cap in, cap the vegetation, that's the whole point. The parking will be pervious pavement, so that takes care of the environmental problem. On the, on the outside lawns, they bring in two feet to take care of it there.
Okay, thanks.
I got it, that helps, that helps me.
Peter, I have one more question, if I can ask. So in regards to the buildings, I don't know if you've given much thought, are you gonna be doing maintenance on-site, or are you gonna be bringing it in from the outside, or is it too early to tell?
On-site.
So I didn't notice a maintenance building or anything like that?
Next to the pool, that pool is actually, and that'll all be, that'll all come as we go. But there's, there's inside underneath, there are hung air conditioning units for the HVAC underneath in the parking garage, and then also in there next to the pool, there's a whole area for pool maintenance, because essentially, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's not a built-in swimming pool, it's a underground pool with the parking garage, a little bit of concrete.
So it's sort of hidden amongst everything?
Well, yeah, you'll, you'll drive around, then off that, there'll be areas, the SFX, or mowers and those kinds of things.
Anything else?
No, not for me, thank you.
Do you feel like you have enough guidance?
Yes, we very much appreciate it, and we will obviously discuss your questions and work on the design, and hopefully, you'll be seeing us shortly. And as I said, we, we hope that, you know, one or two of you can participate once we, we anticipate this inter-municipal committee with some people from the city, because it, it is a unique situation with the two jurisdictions. We, we have to, obviously have to have the same plan approved by both municipalities, so we wanna work together, and we've got two different sets of zoning regulations, although they are, I will say, they're very similar. So I don't see a huge problem there, but we obviously wanna work together. So we, we appreciate your input, and, and thank you for this opportunity.
Are we making any motion regards to this application?
No motion.
Yeah, I don't think so.
So Peter, can I ask you, have you been involved before with multiple municipalities being involved? I know we've done stuff with Penfield, but they were never-
Yes.
So is there ever a chance that folks get together to talk about it, or is it all done just by memo, or?
Well, what they're talking about doing is really an inter-municipal, as it relates to Seeker. I'm not sure about the site plan approval process, it might be-
We anticipate with, for Seeker, too, I'm assuming for the site plan. You know, to have people from Aronique and people from the city sit down and try to work out the issues.
I mean, generally, you know, Alan, you're probably more expert than anyone, but, I mean, someone's gonna be lead agent, and then there're gonna be involved agencies, and we're gonna be one of the involved agencies, or we're gonna be lead agent.
But regardless, I mean, regardless of how that works out, we'd still wanna have the, both municipalities-
Right.
-talking about the site plan, because the traffic is gonna go from one municipality to the other, or, you know, I mean, we gotta deal with it.
I guess my question is, things are never done together, they're still gonna have two separate meetings, I'm just curious.
And I know the city even, at one point, was amenable to, if we ever had to have a joint board, meaning if this board would be amenable to that, having the two boards at some point, because we do need special permit approval from the city planning commission. So they were receptive, you know, the, and, you know, people change and all, but certainly, I think that might be a good idea, so that everybody's on the same page, basically.
Well, one thing I can assure you, that if I have anything to say about it, this board will remain involved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The nice thing is that we're, these guys are all gonna be gone.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a?
Making a motion to adjourn, no, you may not.
No, 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 about the town board referral?
Yeah. If everyone could file out just quietly, we are still having an ongoing meeting here. We still have matters before the board, if we could leave in an orderly fashion. How you doing, Duff?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a positive referral upon a matter of request by Dynamic Engineering, acting as agent for Aronique's Favorite Chicken LLC for a special use permit to operate a Popeye's Restaurant with over 30 seats on premises 1,000 Eastridge Road, Georgetown Plaza, and its C Business District.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay.
As it relates to the meeting minutes, Mr. Chairman, of July 27, 2015, I would like to move approval.
Anyone second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, was that, who's there? I don't have it in front of me.
You were standing, Mr. Chairman.
Here you go.
Kimmy was here.
I was not there.
I was gone.
I'm usually here. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, say nay.
And I abstain.
Thank you.
Tell the Popeye guy he can go home.
What?
You wanna tell the Popeye guy he can go home?
Oh, the Popeye guy's still here.
You can go home now.
Told you he was gonna go. Fascinated, aren't you?
I would make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
All those in favor, aye? Meeting adjourned.